Snow, please. So do I have a motion to the agenda?
I'll second.
All right. Motion carried. May I motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting and as I understand they're not complete, so it'll need to be tabled till the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to table us last month's minutes to next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right.
Aye.
Uh, okay, uh, we'll do the oath of office this time.
You can introduce her if you wish.
What's that?
I need to do you two, don't I?
Yep, you just want us to, it's Danita, myself, Rex.
You'll stand up.
About the sheriff.
The sheriff, I'm sorry.
Do what it said, Rex, you know what you're saying. All right, I'll give you guys each one.
I got one.
You got one, okay. So the oath of office, State of South Dakota County of Bruel says, I, the undersigned, of Buffalo County.
Start over, start over.
So the State of South Dakota County of Buffalo, I, the undersigned, repeat that, please. I, the undersigned.
I, the undersigned.
Do solemnly swear
S solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
of the United States.
and the Constitution of South Dakota
and the Constitution of South Dakota.
and I will faithfully
and I will faithfully
and impartially discharge
impartially discharge.
all the duties of my said office
all the duties of my said office.
as, and then say your office in Buffalo County. This is subscribed and sworn to me on this third day of January two thousand and twenty-three. And you'll sign the oath and it'll be notarized. All right?
All right.
And then it's filed in my office.
It's filed in your office.
Yep.
You need to sign that. Sign one of those, fill in your blanks, and I actually filled in his. Everybody else, it was easier.
That's why, that's why you need to, no, no.
I'll do it.
He's still there now.
Set up there.
So the auditor takes from here, right?
Right, the auditor starts, now you, you start the meeting while for them to do elections, okay?
Call for nominations. Let's call for nominations for the chairman.
I'm, I'd like to make motion that we hire Don next chair.
I mean, not you, you're the professional.
So is that a yes or a no, sir?
Now, so now we have a nomination for Don? Do we have a second?
I need a second, so you can.
That's up to the auditor to ask for the second.
Do we have a second for Don?
No, you're asking me questions, I was trying to keep you on track. Looking for a second, if you're not, so move. All right, you said a second.
So Rex, you second, so I'll have you
You call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Aye. Congratulations.
Congratulations, so Don, you want to come over and take this spot, Rex?
I got it.
I'll have you come over here. Lee, will you grab that in public input? Good, you get to take over the meeting. Whenever there's a public input.
We need to find a new chair. A little while.
You'll need a vice, oh, too.
Do we need a vice chair?
Now we're checking.
Okay.
Okay, now we need the nominations for our vice chair.
I nominate Danita.
I'll second that, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, there's nothing for public input?
Nobody has public input.
Okay, we'll move on to the fuel bids.
Not with your?
Yeah.
You should have had it as well.
Had so many things. Okay.
This is the one thing.
For the month of January, gas unleaded bulk price, three thirty-nine per gallon. Ethanol bulk price, two ninety-four per gallon. Diesel, number one died, bulk price, four fifty. Number two died, three thirty-seven, delivered to the county tanks from Total Oil.
Clouding too, except.
Okay.
All right, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's motion passed. Will you have an update for us?
Yes, I do. Sam's it?
John's it.
Okay. Uh, we've had four workdays since the last meeting, so this list is important but pretty short. We're continuing to widen out the roads and intersections where drifts have restricted the field of vision. We're working at it every day, taking down the high spots of the drifts so that we can taper them up and the wind hopefully will carry the snow through instead of making finger drifts. January fifteenth of this month is the deadline for mining permits. Report appear to the natural resources. Uh, I, I got a couple of days to get that done and I'll get that done before the fifteenth. I make, the I make report on the Larson Bridge is due out later this month. And I've been working on the snow hours for the disaster declaration on how many hours we put into snow removal for the declaration. And so far in four days, that's all like that.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Could I ask a question? Have you been found snow off any roads that are on, not on? Have you found snow off any roads that are not on the county map?
Not, no, not as of the last four days we haven't. Or even before that.
I don't think Junior Van Nuys Road is on the map, maybe it is.
The fall road?
Junior Van Nuys Leonard, Junior?
Yeah, we've, we've.
I don't think that's on the map, and I ain't got nothing against him, but he doesn't have, he doesn't live there, doesn't have cattle there. And I've heard you found him out three times.
Yes, I have. Uh, he has informed me that that's the county road and he get, he got grabbed. I'll have, I've.
If it is, that's fine.
I don't know, I'll have to take a look at the map.
Have you looked at the map?
Yeah, I looked at the map, I can see it on there. Well, that's, I don't, it's on there.
Okay.
But I think as a county, we ain't here just to do stuff, to be busy. Expenses, especially the snow removal gets considerable if it would happen more than one. So I think before you do anything, maybe you weren't informed, but if the road ain't on the map, you're not supposed to touch it.
Okay.
Unless there's emergencies. If he was down in there dying or something, I can understand that from the lake. But he wasn't even at the place.
No, he, he don't live there.
No.
No?
So, I don't know, we can't just be spending money just to help people out.
I agree, I'll look at the map and go from there.
That and gravel and believing and everything.
Okay.
There's a term for that, right?
Putting your duty or trying to?
No, kind of like misuse in county funds.
Okay, can we move on, please? Thank you.
Don't, don't be sure with me on that.
Wayne, Wilma?
I call, calls, Lee.
Oh, okay, excuse me, Lee?
The only thing I have today is we have our, our South Dakota Association of Weed and Pest Supervisors, uh, the annual dues. And I'm, I guess, I'm not sure if that's, I'm assuming it's something that we've done in the past. It is seventy-five dollars. And you'll be paid members to the South Dakota Association, Association of Weed and Pest Supervisors.
We do pay that.
Do we?
Yes, probably the last five years, when we used to have to be mandatory to go to those meetings.
Yep.
We couldn't vote because we never paid any, so we got paid.
So I have that here and it's seventy-five dollars and I'll get it sent in.
We need to make a motion on that, or just, we just don't, have been doing it, okay?
Got it.
All right, and really the only other thing I have today, aside from the, uh, noxious weed list we talked about, I got that started. The second payment from the treasury on the ARPA funds is in on December nineteenth, uh, there was a deposit of a hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred, forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So that concludes the.
We got both payments.
Both payments.
And then that other thing that we just added, that just add for the snow.
Okay, yeah, if there's, if there's anything that, you know, as far as this, any snow declaration or emergency funding, I'll jump all over it, so.
And maybe Rex, you know a little bit more than most people at this point, so do you want to talk about, a little bit about what you know?
Basically, they got, keep track of the time that they've used plow and snow and give it to Catherine Benton. She called me on Saturday and then she sent some stuff on email on Sunday. But then that's basically what I understand it, just keep track of her time.
What, what expenses we have incurred, because she called me also after she called you. And that she would send this. But to keep a hold, keep that and, now it was my understanding we had to be, that the state has been designated as a disaster.
As a.
That's what she told me when she called me on Saturday. But it sounded to me like we as a county needed to accept it and, and ask to be declared as a disaster area also. That was a little bit of my understanding of it.
Yes, we got, yeah.
And so then she sent this, she didn't have one for, um, snow, but she had one, um, for flooding. And, uh.
So is this a state or a federal disaster? Do you guys know which one you're going after?
Well, she said at this point there wasn't any funding.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't think there's been a declaration made by either the state or the.
Well.
I know the state has deployed National Guard out to help with the snow, but that's not a declaration.
Well, she, she just told me that this, so that's all I can go by.
So, and I don't have a problem, I, I think that we ought to be proactive, let's go ahead and plan to instruct them to do that and, yeah, ask for help when we can.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, going to you want to, um, make a motion to, um, declare Buffalo County as a, um, state of disaster?
I make a motion to declare the county a snow disaster area.
Do we have a second?
Snow, snow disaster, or what?
That's what the problem is, to have snow, I think.
So she didn't tell you what's, okay, I'll second it, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passed. So then it was my understanding we, we need to get all of our hours and everything in checker.
It also has to be published too.
Yes.
We need, okay, so we need to have that done too. So you have to. And you'll do that then?
You'll, you'll publish that then, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay.
I have to draft that up and you'll have to come sign it.
Yeah, here's the, the draw.
I guess it's my understanding that the agreement, uh, Sheriff, Law Enforcement Agreement between Brule County and Buffalo County, was authorized and signed by both commissions. And so I've talked with Daryl Miller and gonna be getting together with him and his deputies this week. Hopefully to get them sworn in and, um, get a, get a schedule covered and start going over some things that they don't even know. So if you see a Brule County Sheriff's Office vehicle in Buffalo County, that's what they're here for is, is my deputy. You get a call or whatever, like somebody who's wondering what they're doing up here, like, what I'm knowing, they're authorized to be up here. So it's just a, uh, it's just an on-call, on-call contract. And, um, they get called out and they have to come up. We pay them, we pay them an on-call fee and then we pay them for services rendered if they're actually called up here for their hours and time. They'll perform all the duties, uh, that I do basically, um, for the same as they do in Brule County. They have to write reports, testify, do everything that, uh, law enforcement's required to do.
The calls will go right to the Sheriff's Office down there.
Just, just like I have in the past, if I'm off, I forward my sheriff line to them. So all you have to remember is, is you dial nine-one-one or, or my Sheriff's Office number and they'll, they'll ring to me or it'll ring to them. Okay? They currently have three deputies and the sheriff there, so, you know, it'll be, won't get the same person every time. It'll be the, their whole office will be covering, so whoever's on duty at that time will receive those calls.
I got a couple of questions.
Good.
It's also my understanding, attending that meeting last Thursday, that it's going to be reviewed in three months.
Correct.
And the reason it's being reviewed in three months is because they're considering it as a favor or help to you because you're going to be going into surgery.
Well, I think it's not just the.
If they're going to review it in three months, that's kind of what went through, this is my understanding, I went to the meeting, okay?
Sure.
So I guess I, and I did call you and you said you're going to be doing your surgery, which is fine. But I think everybody needs to be on the same page, knowing why we're doing this and Brule County's going to be reviewing it in three months anyway. And it might be two months before you come back. I know you say it's one day or whatever, strung out, but I think everybody needs to know that they are going to be here, okay? The other one, I wanted to ask you a question, I was, when we, when you did your disaster, you declared your emergency and you sent residents out in county vehicles, who did we rescue?
Um, I'll talk to you in executive session about that, not in general session.
Well, was it one person, we talking about cars, I mean, I heard there was like twelve, fifteen cars stuck over this way, you know? So this is my, that's, I think it's a legitimate question, I mean.
Multiple, multiple
Okay.
units, I can't tell you how many, right now, it was multiple.
From them, then if they plowed to them.
What, what?
Well, you helped get these people out, didn't you?
Correct, yeah.
I have a trail said there are thirty-seven vehicles and that.
I've heard that, that's why, that's all I'm asking, okay? So who are these people that were out this way because there was no road travel, you know? They closed the interstate.
They was working for a living.
They closed the interstate, there are people that were working for a living too, that are getting billed three, four thousand dollars because they had to come and rescue them. I would like to see us try to get some of this money back, I mean. But if you're going to talk to us in executive, but I'd like to know and I think it's something we ought to share with our taxpayers too.
Google Maps had the road open, okay? That's what them guys, most of them showed their phone, road open. That's why you can argue what you want, but that's.
The interstate's closed.
It happened in Han County, it happened in Hightown, it happened in Houston.
I know it did, I know it did, I know it did. And thankful that nobody got hurt, people did die someplace, so very thankful for that. So you'll talk to us in executive.
If they, the tow trucks, people and the guys running the state plows, because they was out there when you couldn't hardly see.
You were out there before a state plow, weren't you?
Yeah, the first day.
Okay, let's move on, treasurer.
The first one was hospitalizations, uh, for December.
Oh, no, settlement, uh, certification accounts.
We don't have that yet.
Okay.
What we do is every month, there is a calendar that comes out and on there, there was something for the treasurer, we don't have that yet.
Okay.
So I told her, just don't even come in and I would tell you guys that, sorry. So we will have that next month.
Okay.
And so then the next one would be the auditor, hospitalizations for December. I gave that to Steve, I believe there were four. So he can review those and you guys want to look through those as well.
Okay, so you're asking to table the treasurer's report.
Correct.
Okay.
And then treasurer and auditor, we, because it's the new year, we, we have not obviously gotten to that, so we will.
We'll table that.
Right.
Thank you.
So the hospitalizations are just notices?
Correct. And you said there were four? I think, is there three or four there, I think?
I, I.
One questionable, one and three, for sure. One's a bill, but a questionable bill.
We don't have any backup there.
I think the fourth one is the same as one of them.
And then I got a new voucher for a bill today too and I'll get that one taken care of as well.
When's that going to come up, the overtime deal, when's that come up for discussion?
Yep, pretty soon, well. We, we can certainly do that now, we want to, but I would like to go into private executive session and bring that one.
I visited with, with Steve about it, we need to go into executive session.
I'll bring that one in when we go in.
Okay. Okay, um, appoint board, boards, planning and zoning, um.
Mr. Litter was on that one, is that you?
I don't.
Well, Rex.
Don't know, you want to do it?
I had no point, I ended up on weed boards, you got your planning.
You don't even have planning and zoning ordinance.
No, we don't even have planning and zoning ordinance, so, so why would we?
We could point them board, just in case, if you want.
Okay.
They don't have to.
I'm not saying you need to.
We'll put Rex.
If you ever did, if you ever did, the ordinance was in.
So keep all the other ones on there and just where Lloyd's at, but Rex.
Has anybody said they wanted to be removed, or you just asked them because some people should.
I haven't.
Alan Fagan, Jack Abernathy, like, nibbling and like.
I just put them on here because that's what, he was here last.
Oh, on the weed board? Okay, on the weed board, we have Danita, Lee Sinkey, Richard Coleman, Jeff Fagan, Jared Loth, who's coming out, will need to appoint somebody, they will, when they meet again, and Brian Rauner. Tri-County landfill board, I'm on that, I. Yeah, I, I'll stay on that, we just had a, uh, conference call, the thirteenth of December, and they're opening the, the newest cell. And, uh, it's, it's getting ready to be used, so. Mental health board, Deech Cook, Carol Graven and Susan Horty, anybody want off or?
Well, I will tell you this much, I haven't built Buffalo County for any, I've done about six of them.
Okay.
And I haven't built for any of them, that's probably going to change in the future, because probably every one of those takes at least a couple of hours. I just.
Okay.
And I think at some point, we probably need to meet to discuss what happens if I'm not here, um, and the paperwork that's involved for the backups over here. Because I don't think they've ever booked that, so.
All right, District Three, uh, Danita, you'll stay on that. Drainage board, it's the county commissioners. Any changes or additions? Okay. Next one, number thirteen, legal place for holding foreclosure sales.
Venue at the courthouse.
Okay.
Want to tree me?
Yep, as far as I'm concerned, leave it at courthouse, okay? Uh, the official newspaper is currently Central Dakota Times, I'm not sure that we really have any other option.
They try.
But, yep.
Do we need, can we do this all at once?
You can, you can approve it all, you don't have to reach one.
Uh, official depository, currently Quinbank. Mileage state rate is fifty-one, the sheriff is fifty-six.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Fifty-eight is the sheriff, fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-nine, excuse me, fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
So do you have the Quinbank deal?
Mm-hmm.
Is that where our half lack and all that stuff come on? How is that associated with Quinbank?
Our Blue Cross is through Quinbank, I believe.
I, everything just kind of filters through there, I think.
So, okay.
We don't do it separately through them.
Okay, well, we need to talk about that too, uh, where we're doing our insurance.
Okay. I, I think Blue Cross is through Quinbank when I have, when I filled mine out, however many, you know, two years ago.
They're like the administrator, I think, in a sense.
So, election precinct and polling places currently Buffalo County Courthouse, Fort Thompson Catholic Hall and Crow Creek Community Hall. I can see, see. Can I have an approval or a motion to approve?
Do you want to prove up to there, I mean, it just seemed like a nice.
Let's do that now.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve up to line seventeen.
Twelve to seventeen.
Up two and three, line seventeen.
What is this called, this is called our annual? I need to say up to page seventeen, number seventeen is our, what, annual appointments or?
Designation.
Designation, all right, I'll second that motion.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Rex?
Rex, you gonna say aye?
Aye, okay, our motion passed, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two thousand and twenty-three designations.
Yeah, two thousand and twenty-three designations. Salary rates reflects current amounts. Commissioners.
I say we should cut that by half.
Sorry. Two hundred dollars per meeting plus mileage.
Do we have comparable salaries for light counties?
I haven't gotten that yet, no.
There is a salary survey, I want to say the last one I've seen was, it was fairly recent. I just looked on, uh, South Dakota County's website before we come in here and I didn't find it right away. I can certainly get that. I've seen it, a hard copy in here somewhere to that effect too. So there has been salary surveys done within the last three, four years. We just don't have it.
But it's always nice to have so then we can reflect on what other counties are like population.
Probably don't have, um, light pop, populations.
I don't have the commissioners on there, but I have the rest of them. Someone must have, last year, Staley County was from this fall. But it don't have the commissioners on there. But it doesn't have the commissioners on there. Most of the sheriff gets as much more than the highway superintendent. Very few of the, rest of the county employees, highway people get over twenty dollars now, that have been there for years.
Sorry about that, I think the noise on.
See, some of those we share.
Right.
You know Debbie gave us that real nice little payment on last Tuesday, and I didn't bring it.
It's, it's in there yet.
It's in there some point.
No, I didn't say no, he literally laughed about it, he said. Made a real resolution.
Okay. So, do we wanna go down?
One at a time, I would say.
Yeah. Okay, the auditor. Registered is at forty thousand. The treasurer is at forty-two. State's attorney is at thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-one. Sheriff is at forty-seven thousand, seven thirty-one, twenty. Director of equalization, we don't have, is, was at forty. Weed supervisor is three thousand. County assistant, nineteen thousand, two hundred. Highway superintendent, fifty-six thousand, and highway assistant, forty-eight thousand. The commissioners are five thousand, six hundred. Insurance is one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. So.
I don't need, how, when do I talk to staff every week, but I don't need to rely on the trans.
We'll talk after.
I'm on Jay and Metta gear and all that stuff.
So.
There's a form that you'll have to find, fill out, and we just put decline on it.
I would just wonder why the auditor gets less per hour than the county assistant.
Less?
And why the highway superintendent gets way more than anybody.
But he's getting less than the thirty you were asking for.
I charged for the hours, my butt was in the seat, so, not for seven and eight.
Yeah, but you still, hours, if you're looking at the hourly part of it.
I ain't looking at that.
Okay, well, then you should be, because that's what you were quoting. But, this part here, now, help me understand this, Deb, when you gave this to us, this include, did the percent increase that we had talked about?
This is the percent increase, then, this is what it would go to.
And this is coming out of the funds that we're, we've collected out of the, right?
If we wanted to use the ARPA, that's how much we would have for the ARPA, yes.
Okay, and this would include these guys on here. And everybody would get an increase but us.
That's what she's looking at, what it's looking at.
But the ARPA money can be used for, you know, the bridges and everything.
It'd be a, well. That, that would make it a real, that would make it very difficult, if you want, for the ARPA dollars, to, to make it into a bridge, or to, to do the dollars that way, it's, it's really difficult to, to make it into.
We had said that we were gonna use the ARPA funds for salary and benefits.
So it'd be a one and done dollars.
That's what we ended up getting back from them, that's what she submitted in order to get those dollars. And so what we were going to do is gonna put it back in here, and you'd ask for the five percent increase, which is fine, I don't have a problem with that, I just want you to know that those are one-time dollars. We get by with it this year, but it's gonna have, be something that's coming up next year.
Right, but, but when, if we wanted to do it like what Rex is kinda wanting, you would have to ask for those dollars over and over and over again. Through the state, so you'd have to call Rod Fortin every time and ask for, for, every time. So instead of, you'd rather just do salaries, and then you can take, if you want new tractor, if you wanted this or that, we don't have to ask Rod Fortin for those dollars.
Use salary and benefits, it's one and done, you get to keep the money.
That's what we went after.
Yep.
It's a third time period to use it, twenty, twenty-five.
We already collected it. It's here, we, we, to spend it now, it's, it's ours to spend, so I understand what you're saying.
I think, I think that's what it is.
You have until that time to spend it, but we've, and we just got the second go around, so we have until that time.
And we talked about it last time, the, based on the salary rates right now, the funds will be exhausted by twenty twenty-five.
For both.
For both, cuz the total, the total award was three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, and it come in two pieces, one half, second half. And then we said, all the other counties are using it for wages and benefits, and then you, when you apply for that, it's one and done. There's no other reporting, if we were to apply to put it, say, towards a road grader or a truck, you'd have to, there'd be a lot more paperwork involved, and you don't wanna do that. Yeah.
So you get the money. General funds to use for different.
Exactly, and last time, we transferred the first half to the general fund, so it doesn't really matter what you use it on, you get to keep the money.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't have to raise all the salaries just to use that that much.
No.
Right, right.
We're using it for salary, and it's gonna free up the salary money in there for something else.
You don't have to, you don't have to increase salaries, we just wanna use the, right.
But our employees have been a year without a raise. So I think it's something that, that would be beneficial to look at.
I don't have a problem with the five percent, but I think with the cost of gas and everything, I think we should be able to get something a little more than our five percent too. I think, I think the last time we did that, oh, help me hard on, Elaine was still here, and we made a motion like that, and everybody got a salary increase but us, and I think the salary increase we got was like, what? Five dollars a month, or something, it was, it's very minimal. Five percent of two hundred is not anything, you're gonna break your neck over, you know?
I would suggest also cellphone, half of your cellphone, and you guys get a lot of phone calls.
Communication charge?
I, I, I'd suggested that with Dawn, I think you guys get an awful lot of phone calls. But that was just something that I had, I.
Well, and a lot of places do that, okay? But I don't think five percent is out of line, out of two hundred.
Right, I just put it in here, cuz.
Five dollars, you know? So, I would make a motion that we increase, like we had talked about this, the annual five percent, along with this.
I don't think a pay cut for the commissioners would be out of line.
So I have a motion on the floor.
I won't second it, nobody.
Steve, I can second it, can't I? I will second it.
I have, I have something to interject here before you vote on that, some discussion.
Now we can.
Five percent is not acceptable in my case, and I will negotiate with you in executive session on the salary.
So, it stands until we change it.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I have a vote?
Aye.
No.
Aye. Okay.
There'll probably be a lot more phone calls, when you go, it's talking about raising taxes, the country just spending here in the year.
VA officer position.
That's currently open, last Thursday, I, after I went to that commissioner meeting, I went down and talked to the VA guy down there, Mr. Thomas. And he was the one that was recommended by the guy from Davison County. I, I liked his ability to work, I granted he is new, I understand that, but I think he's got a lot of support, and I would support a VA contract with Brule County. To be worked out, however, we, how would we do that, we'd have to work it out.
Yeah, propose something to him.
Yeah.
I think it's actually gonna be with, with him, independent, Brule County.
Does he only work, he's not a full-time guy, don't he?
He works just a few hours a week.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he's not full-time.
Okay. So then we would need to work directly with him, each, Zach?
Well, I think what you would wanna do is talk to both, talk to him, talk to Brule County, you know, maybe there's a cashier kind of thing, you guys can work out with it as well.
Does he work with that guy in Mitchell, that Davison County guy?
You know, I haven't, I have no knowledge of that.
Yeah.
He stopped in the other day, and he, he has some ideas as well, so maybe we can all get together and talk.
I think Aurora County, Ambro County were sharing one for a while, but now Aurora County went on its own, so, I don't know. Aurora County, uh, Doral County, and I think one other one, they all went to Mitchell. Well, I didn't know if Aurora County, I knew Doral obviously did, and very, very satisfied with Mitchell County's work, very satisfied.
He'll be retiring soon.
Yeah.
And it was his recommendation that we try to stay in Brule County.
Right.
Lloyd, did you have something?
No, not this time, I, I understand the situation.
Can we back up just a minute, we, for contract workers, we kinda got some going at twenty-five, some going at thirty, can we maybe set a, set standards?
What, what do we have for contract labor, or for contracting you're talking about?
Well, like, I have Yvette coming in, there once, for the twenty-five, but we had, like, the sheriff had somebody come through for thirty. And let's say if, they had, sorry, who did you have, contract worker had him for how much?
I had Jim for twenty-seven days.
So I think we need to maybe start the year with something pretty even, or, I guess I don't know.
There's a lot of difference in jobs.
Yeah, there's a lot of difference in their jobs, so I think that's gonna be a, yeah.
Each one of those, you have a contract though, that you would be able to back yourself up with, so.
So, but how do you start it though, so somebody can just come in and say, I'm gonna do this at thirty dollars an hour, or how, how do you initiate it?
Well, it's gonna come out of their department budget.
Yeah.
Okay, because you each of them have a department budget.
The only thing about it, I think the highway department's gotta get half a million dollar budget, so he could pay a hundred dollars an hour.
We approved him at twenty-seven fifty. We approved that judge at twenty-seven fifty.
She said it comes out of his budget, but if you got a half million dollar budget, you could pay a hundred dollars.
And Wayne kinda said the, what do I wanna say, you kinda said that on, on your guy, right Wayne, I mean, on. Because, you know.
That's what we had, we were working on an agreement to pay Brule County was thirty dollars.
Right, exactly.
I'd had to pay them that.
Yeah, he'd had to pay Brule County that, so, and.
And that's what he says, it's different jobs.
So.
Okay, and then each time somebody comes to do a contract, everybody should get a contract agreement, correct?
Steve, is that right, not right? There's some kind of man.
We should, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Big deal, you have to.
Before they do the work.
Well, they have to approve contracts.
Exactly, thank you, thank you.
It can't be just, can't just be, hey, I'm gonna hire you.
Well, there was, there was an instance though, and why we had to do it, Wayne, he said.
Yeah, I'm very well aware of that one.
Right, we, we were, everybody's hands were tied on that deal, and.
I know all about it, I had to modify paperwork four times.
Right.
May I ask a question please? How many, excuse me, how many part-time people actually work here at the courthouse? And do you really, I am not doubting you, I'm just asking, how much is, do you really need all this part-time help here in the courthouse?
We've got one.
Who's the one?
Uh, Yvette.
And how often does she work?
No, she's fully full-time.
Lee's full-time, okay, now.
Yeah, Lee's full-time.
So he's full-time here in the courthouse too, as what the role you?
Uh, yeah, weed supervisor, he's helping the director of equalization.
Oh, that's we gotta bring that up. Highway for.
Well, we're finishing up, we see it.
Well, don't let me forget, okay?
My question is, is, why do you need Yvette here now, I mean, I'm not, I'm just asking, is there, did you get a bigger workload, or is something coming?
Very much a bigger workload, we have well over two million dollars that come through, we have the wheel tax, now there's just a bunch of stuff that comes through, the levies, we have axiomatic now. There's a ton of stuff, if you'd like to come in for a full day, we can certainly come in and go through, but.
Saying to you, I'm just, as a taxpayer, we're wondering where our tax dollars are going, if we have more people coming in here at twenty-five bucks an hour, that's a pretty good check at Buffalo County.
It is, and I, and I can tell you, we are busy, and I'm here weekends and evenings, and we, we still have stuff to do, we have, it, it is super busy, and. Yeah.
I, I, can I interject something too? When she came to apply, she applied for equalization, there were three applications for equalization, and at that time, we had two individuals that were leaving. So we ended up hiring all three, she didn't apply for that job, we asked her to take the auditor's job, so we basically put her in there. And they did have the lady from the county over here helping you for a bit, you know, it was kinda like on-the-job training as you go with her. And it's the end of the closeout, now that Yvette's helping her with every month, they have to reconcile, while they're not talking very well. I don't know what it is, something with the computer or whatever, so Yvette's helping them do the reconciliation between those, so that we can zero it out. And it's taking care of a lot of the findings we had too, really.
So this is almost gonna be like a permanent part-time job?
No, she's working herself out of a job, I mean, that's idea, that is to her to work herself out of a job, so Deb can take over a lot of this stuff.
But the state has added new things, this axiomatic is something that we, we didn't even know was gonna, and that came from the director of equalization, which there moved over to here. Well, the director of equalization hasn't been here, so I've been doing parts of that that have had to then move over to here, which is part of the levies. Which, so, so it has been overwhelming, so.
Elections.
And, and elections was, was huge, and so I'm glad Yvette was here to help with elections.
And with the elections, have paid that.
Right.
That's all paid by have, have a money, so it, it wasn't taxpayer money that, that paid the elections.
Buffalo County is one of three counties in the state of South Dakota that don't have to ask for have, I mean, because of the reservation here and stuff, so a lot of that comes down to help you set up, really voting for them. So it seems like a lot, I understand, but I'm very thankful that Lee's here too, because Lee's able to follow up on a lot of those grants. I mean, two years ago, three years ago, we sent over a hundred thousand dollars back, because we didn't want technology, I mean, we're out in the middle of the booties, come on, you know, make it easy for us.
Well, we got, we got the three hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then we got another hundred thousand here, we've got part of that, that, that is helped this.
That's all part of that three hundred.
No, that fifty-one is.
It's additional.
It's additional.
Total grants were just under a half a million.
Yeah, total grants that, that we've been able to secure, about under a half million, just under.
Within one year.
Within one year, so.
My understanding was, Yvette is gonna be kind of permanent part-time.
Nothing's ever been put permanent.
If it is, it comes through us, okay?
Well, I've not heard that.
So it's not one person doing that, it's three commissioners making a decision, not one.
I don't think so, cuz it's out of Deb's office, Dottie's office has the right.
But you guys sign, you guys sign the vouchers. So, you guys can say no to that.
Okay.
May I ask a question just for clear understanding, so now that the courthouse has more employees, because. So now that the courthouse has more employees, because a lot of things have changed, which opens, that has opened doors for you guys to get grants, which you get more money in, correct? Is that how, so we can well share.
Non-taxpayer dollars, non-taxpayer dollars.
I'm just asking in case, like, if, like, we just went over the budget for people's salaries. If you're getting all this money in now that you've opened up the doors, but is that come from a different department or category? Because it sounds like if you're getting a lot more money in, why can't we afford to pay our share of more than five percent?
The budget does have it set where you could do that more. If you look at the budget, the budget has it set to where you could triple it if you wanted to, if you wanted to look at the budget. The budget was set out. I think that budget looked at was quite a bit more, was, but you have your budget. So what did it look for, for salaries?
Sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember. We did that back in September.
So he, there was a budget that we submitted, he submitted.
I'm just saying, so the funds are there.
The funds are there.
The funds are there to give him a better increase than.
The funds were there and were submitted and, and were signed by the commissioners, yes.
But it was stated that this COVID money is gonna be spent by twenty twenty-five. Then it's gonna come out unless something else comes up, then we gotta dig out of our own box.
But the money that you're saving from salaries now, right now that we're using COVID for, you know, it is a wash.
You're gonna have a lot of.
So that's why if you continue to give them increases, you gotta remember that, because when that money's gone, we gotta use taxpayer dollars to do it.
Right.
Okay, so that's what we're trying to get across here.
I got it.
Okay.
But you're not gonna stop, you, you put two hundred thousand out of the general fund into the highway department, that money, that's gonna, that'll keep. You're never gonna run out of expenses in the highway department, correct? When the COVID money is finished, highway department won't need that money.
Yeah, the only salaries are going into highway department, right? We're not buying any kind of, we're just talking salaries.
All right, can we move on to the coroner?
Let's get on to the, can we get on to the director of equalization? You have an application?
And?
And?
And what?
Don't you wanna fail the position?
I think what needs to be set on the agenda and you have to set up time.
I was told that it was in there, right Deb?
Yeah, you also have another letter in there, Rex, so there'll be a couple things that'll come out.
So it's on the agenda?
No, they're not on the agenda.
You told me it was.
Well, you can't, you can't, you have to, you have to put that into executive session.
It has to on your executive session.
Because you can't add that form into the, so that goes into executive session.
So we can do nothing today?
We can go into executive session and they can do those type of things in executive session.
We can hire you?
I don't know the answer to that one, because I don't know the answer to that.
Because I told you I wanted it on the exec, or not on, on the agenda.
Did you read the agenda? Front and back, remember?
So.
Oh, gosh.
So you, we don't want nobody in that office.
I didn't say that. All I'm saying is you put that down here, we've got other ones.
Can we hire temporary?
Well, can we just finish up where we're at and we're going to executive session?
The chunk of this line that somebody said that was on there.
The coroner is next.
Nine-one, DOE, nine-one-one, that is.
I don't know, do we have a coroner?
We, we did. Darren Hickey was, but I don't.
Is he not one?
I don't know.
The last, two years ago.
Two years ago, he said that was gonna be the end, but.
And then he did one more year.
Yeah.
And what they've done is, I told you this last year. The coroner used to be, we would pay a flat fee and then we pay it when they come out. Well, now they've decided that they need to have like a day or two of training to be coroner. Even though these guys have been, like, there and around for a long, long time. And, uh, so all of a sudden, we were paying a minimalistic amount, a few hundred dollars so we could claim he was our coroner. And he said, no, I'm not doing, I don't wanna do that. You, you do understand what a coroner does. They show up when somebody's dead and that's not the most. It's always at night, it's always at a weekend, and it's always hugely uncomfortable, let's say. It's not a, an easy thing when it happens. And it happens not very often, fortunately. But, uh, so I, I don't know that we can get him back again. I don't, I don't know where we're at. And there, you know.
Doesn't the tribe have a coroner? Do you have a?
We do, we used to have, um, Mr. Estes, but Mr. Estes passed away.
Passed away.
And then I think it was Hickey, but I'm not too sure.
We'd have to call and visit with Darren and find out, is that, I would go about about it.
I guess we, we have to go back to Manast again and see. And I would guess it's gonna change in the cost. They gotta go to a school, something they don't wanna do.
Do you wanna call him or do one of us need to?
I think one of you would be better.
I'll, I'll call Darren. I'll call Darren.
I don't do many coroner stories. Would make you not wanna do it.
I know.
And I'll follow up, yeah, tribal.
I know. I got to hear about one, so. Uh, election.
And we don't have election for this next time, so I think, well, I'll just keep it the same then when we have election for, maybe you and Janice for the next time, we'll just figure it out from then, so.
Okay.
I think we'll be all right there.
Good.
And then I did put nineteen on there for per diems. I know that technically we don't, we don't seem to have per diems. Like, so I put it on there because I wasn't sure if Buffalo County does per diems, if we.
We'd match what, am I incorrect? Haven't we matched whatever the state has? Like, if they pay ten dollars for breakfast, we do it with state.
So we just do what the state does?
That's what my.
You mean for the meetings and stuff?
If, if you go somewhere and you have per diem is, uh, what do you get paid for a meal and what do you get paid to stay overnight?
Right.
The state has a rate.
So just do the state rate for what we do? And the sheriff would do the same rate for the state rate for the sheriff, okay? Okay?
That's, that's what I thought we did the past.
Okay.
Now, would this be where you would add for like, um, cellphone?
You'd have to S D, I'm not sure.
Would that per diem be included in the cellphone or is that more of a? I'm trying to remember where it is on those expense budgets.
Okay. Continuing education.
I gave that to you guys in your packets. I, I. I know, when I was at the state conference, they're really gonna start pushing ten hours of continuing and whether you are, um, I, I know it's hard to say you have to do it, but they're really strongly encouraging, no matter who you are, an elected official should go to conferences or to get ten hours of continuing education. So.
On, on like what?
Uh, there's conferences that I sent out or.
But I mean, when you're commissioner, does it have to do with county only? I mean, Jesus, I sit on the RIA board. You know, that's all part of what pulls us together.
I know, you would, you would have, you would have a ton of hours, so.
My district she is all.
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
So. That would be for the people here as well, so.
Okay.
And then I'm just gonna continue to add state retirement on there, because I would certainly, I think that would be a, a benefit for people, so.
Okay, and that's six percent that the county pays and then except for the sheriff. And then, um, I believe it's eight percent for the sheriff, isn't it?
And there's a reason for that.
Yeah.
The reason that the sheriff gets paid more.
There's six percent and then you're eight percent. Okay.
And it's both ways, because it comes out of the.
Yep, it comes out.
County pays X and the employee pays X. County pays eight percent. The sheriff would pay eight percent out of his salary, every employee, six percent.
Yep. Okay, shall we move into executive session?
Did you, hey, did we ever move to approve some of those salaries and stuff? Were we done?
We went with this one yesterday, remember what we had Thursday?
All right, bud.
We gave him five percent.
Danita and Dawn said yes to that, Rex said no.
And, and the retirement system, the reason why a lot of, that we don't want is that they.
Well, it's gotta be, everybody's gotta want it.
I believe so, and I called the state, they have, there's a training that has to go and I could not make it to that training because we were in a blizzard, so.
Okay.
It'd probably leave down again. Okay, be interesting.
Is that, is that something that Joe would like? His retirement rule, is that something you could check in and, or?
I'll check in, you're up.
Okay, because I know it's gotta be everybody or nothing.
Right.
And I would like part of executive session too, I know. We share with.
Something like that.
What's that?
Retirement.
Okay.
I'll move, then we're going to executive. Have a second?
And that's for personnel reasons?
Let's, let's say personnel, I guess it won't be, yeah, I think it's not litigation.
If you guys are going to the.
We, we have litigation now because of the, the, um, separate, the claims, not the real litigation.
So, and litigation?
They could go there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Feel good to the.
You need a second.
We need a second, Rex?
Aye.
You guys can argue your answer, whatever you want, hold on.